All right, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 6th, meeting of the Monmouth Council. I'd like to call a meeting to order and we'll have a roll call, fellas.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Counselor Stanky.
Here.
Mayor Milligan.
Tonight, we have two items on there, the approval of the minutes for the council meeting from May 2nd and approval of the minutes from the council work session, same night, May 2nd. Approval of both?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded.
May I make a note of clarification on the minutes on May 2nd?
Sure.
Under citizen comments, it's noted that Bill Foster said that he was upset that children were supposed to speak and no children spoke. I just want to make it clear that Counselor Stanky and I asked that the parents of the sleepy children be allowed to speak.
So the children could go home and sit in the block. Okay.
And on the business agenda one regarding the sign ordinance, regarding response to Mr. Thurman's comments, that there was a response, that there is a mechanism in the law or in the code that requires those intersections to be cleared of those signs, what do you call it, the diamond, the diamond rule? What he called it, the rule of the diamond where you had to have lines of sight.
Triangle.
Right, so.
Let me see where you want that ended.
Yeah, that was responded, there is a mechanism in place to address his concern.
Okay. And so, you accept those revisions?
You bet.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded with the amendment says noted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. So this last month, we had four meetings to cover the budget and I wanted to say a big thanks to the citizen members of the Budget Committee, Mark Lane, Stephen Deftula, Tom Perry, Kathy Volz, George Jeffrey, Kyle Jonsen, and Rich Graham for their work on that. With all their questions and diligence and study in the budget, I believe we came up with a really good product. And we'll be having a public hearing on that at our next council meeting and then we'll be approving the budget later that evening. I also got to participate in Ash Creek Restoration Project Tour that was on May the 31st. They took us through four different properties. One that was at the City of Monmouth water treatment area where there's some riparian area getting done along the creek. And then we went over to Talmage Middle School, just north of there, there's another section that's getting plants put in there and weeds taken out and ivy and blackberry removed. And then there's another private property in Independence and then down to Independence where the Riverfront Park and the trail start and then we went up the trail a little bit to see what work had been done along there. And it was quite interesting to see all the work that's been done to improve the aquatic and flora and fauna along Ash Creek over the last four years now. Twenty thirteen was when they started the project. And then on June 2nd, there was an inclusive resolution panel that was held at Monmouth Library. It was a collaboration between the Heritage Museum, Western Oregon University, Western Oregon University's Mecha Club, and the City of Monmouth. And we talked about the inclusive resolution, what the Mecha students had done to help bring that resolution into being. And then also what Western Oregon University was doing for their part in making things inclusive. And the Heritage Museum is working on a project to take some of their storyboards about the Latino history in Independence and get it to be in English and Spanish because so far it's only been in English, so they wanted to get the bilingual piece on that. So it was a really nice meeting. I don't know, we had the library meeting room full. How many people do you think were there, Scott? Thirty, five, forty?
Yeah, probably.
Something like that. So it was a really good meeting and hopefully it's not the last. One of the plans was to try and see if through panel discussions, interactions with Western Oregon University and the city, that we could really start to work on making the word inclusive part of our everyday language and that it's not just something that's a piece of paper on our website that says we're inclusive, but that it really becomes what we do in the city. And with that, we'll get to the council reports and Counselor Silvernagle.
Yes, Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met on May 23rd. As usual, they've got various classes that are starting. One of them that was new that they're going to start in August, so it's a little ways off, is is a savvy caregivers' class, so that'd be one that people could take advantage of. Another discussion that was a little different was they were talking about doing a warming center and/or in this case, this time of year, a cooling center using the senior center for that. It'd be open to not just seniors, to everyone. They're looking to change a venue for the Western Days booth and I think they're going to have, end up with an open house over at the senior center. It'll be a little bit different this year for the July 4th festivities. So they'd have to get some signings over there and stuff to get people to come over. And the armed forces celebration went well and there was about 20 people there and they basically all shared stories, as I understand, so that concludes my report.
All right, Counselor Johnson.
The planning commission did not meet at the first of May, they didn't meet at that time. And then on the, for the second meeting, they had the, they went to the Ash Creek deal, they were part of that Ash Creek, so that's all it was, it needed one of them, so can't help you on that.
Okay. Counselor Sharmar.
The Tree Advisory Board met on May 18 and we decided that the tree to celebrate the Great Eclipse will probably be at Don Redwood and that will probably be planted sometime in the fall and we'll keep you updated on that. There are three memorial trees at Monmouth Elementary School that were planted in honor of three children who died. And although the plaques for those trees are still there, the trees somehow are gone and we're looking into that to how to replace those trees in a way that works well with the school. And the yard tree program, now that we've got just about every square inch of Monmouth and public land planted with beautiful trees, we're looking for other places and there will hopefully be a yard tree program in the future where we can offer to help residents plant trees in their yards. And on June 14th, which is Flag Day, at 6:30 in Madrona Park, there will be a potluck between the Parks and Rec Board and the Tree Advisory Board. And I think anybody in the public is invited to attend that, so I might bring a cherry pie, so if you want some of that, come on over to Madrona Park at 6:30 on June 14th. And then the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club is hosting the Fourth of July Parade and the Tree Advisory Board will be supporting a float to recognize Monmouth's 15th year as a Tree City USA. So we're looking for people to loan us trees in pots that we can put on the float and if you know a child who'd like to ride on the float as Miss Tree Monmouth, please let me know and I'll make a tree costume for her. And that's my end word.
Thank you. Counselor Carey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the MyNet Budget Committee wrapped up our work on June 1 and passed a budget that will be recommended to the MyNet Board at our next meeting and exactly when that'll be passed, I'm not quite clear. But the 1718 budget reflects the investments that you've heard about that are necessary, you know, for the tech refresh. It appears to be a stable budget with some revenue increases projected, albeit not dramatic. There will be a bit of an increase, we believe, at least in 1718, in their ability to cover a greater portion of the debt that we are all a part of. And I would note that this, the budget that was passed, again, by the Budget Committee, reflects the existing business model. There's no new business opportunities there. As you heard when the general manager was here, any of those would have their own sort of separate freestanding business plans that we'd be alerted to when those come. So, you know, it went through smoothly, the budget was all of those questions certainly about a number of things. It passed unanimously through the Budget Committee and much like our own, it's made up of members of the MyNet Board and members of the public. So it's the same kind of a public budgeting deal. So that really is the only report that I have, really, from MyNet.
All right, thanks. And Counselors, thank you.
The Traffic Safety Commission met last night and two key things that were discussed. One is the looking ahead to the reconstruction at 99 Main. That is going to be a very involved project, going to get down to actually tearing up the roadway and it's going to be very disruptive of local traffic, it sounds like, a lot of detours. Of course, they're going to want to keep the highway traffic going, was the gist that I got of it, so we can look forward to that. Then concern was raised about speed increases and traffic increases on East Clay, particularly from 99 to Whitman. And options were discussed, including as the Police Department gets up to force, they can devote some time to some focused enforcement if speed is a problem there. In addition, Russ is going to investigate the traffic calming effect of perhaps more crosswalks. We can't do stop signs because that's a minor, am I getting it straight, a minor arterial or what are they called?
It's a collector.
It's a collector. And so you just can't put a bunch of stop signs on that or it stops collecting and just becomes a traffic jam. And they're also looking into the options related to solar powered speed signs that, you know, tell you how fast you're going and what the speed limit is when you get there. And there were some intriguing options. Of course, you know, you can't just buy a simple sign anymore. They've got signs that will count the number of cars, the speed they're going, the time of day they're going. If we want to get into the analytics, it'll be much more expensive. And then you have your basic radar sign and everything in between, but there was some good discussion about the areas of town that are dealing with speed and how to calm those areas down.
All right, thanks. Are there any community announcements from the council? So, nice quiet summer coming up.
Yes.
There will be a Fourth of July festival, will be the third and the fourth in Monmouth this year. It will be a day and a half rather than multiple days. And with that, what about the senior managers' report?
Yep, a few items. Police Department achieved made two hires, so we've got two of the four, we're working on four right now, which is not a good thing, but we got two hires and then we'll work on the other two coming up. We had an interesting meeting with the Public Work Staff and ODOT. One key thing that came out of the discussion is initially enough, the west side of 99 is actually city right of way rather than ODOT right of way. So that means anything that happens in there, we actually get a reimbursement rate for relocating lines, different things. The sad part of the story is most all of our utilities are on the side. So a little, little nudge here and there, we're going to get some formulas for them, but they've, they've got that identified, so we'll see where that goes. Our two buildings, the old fire station, we'll get the bid on that, they're moving forward, they've been doing inspections on it, taking a look. One thing we ended up doing is they wanted a protected way to get from the parking lot onto the sidewalk because a lot of times they say, hey, go take a run around the block or something for the exercise group there. And so what we're going to do is actually relocate the side of the driveway a little bit because right now it kind of goes right up the gut and so we're going to slide it down a little bit so they have a protected access onto the sidewalk and then they might rethink or how the pass-through goes into the neighborhood parking lot, so I think that's got some good potential. That was nice timing and ability to work with them on that. And then the police station, we've got the folks there, they're doing the same thing, doing inspections. We also set up, it's a church use, so it's actually a conditional use per our code, so you have to go through that step. And then they also don't have enough parking on site, so they're looking at options to either share parking with someone else or get a parking variance. So they're working on those things as we speak right now. And then the last one, the finance director, we obviously have our interim place, the position closes this week and then we'll start into the resume reviews and all into the interviews and everything, so we'll see where that goes.
All right. At that, this time we're going into citizen comments, this is a time for people who want to speak on items that are not on the agenda and we'll give you a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up, there's a sign up sheet for your, I believe your name and address and is there a topic on there as well?
Right, I did that.
Okay.
It asked for name and city, so I did that. My name is Judy Mall and I'd like to talk about budget again. And Laurel, you had asked me to talk about parking, but I assume that isn't that, okay. I did get correspondence from Kristoop Rist and it sounds like the budget for the library is in good shape actually, so I would withdraw my comments from the last meeting regarding staffing cuts and hour cuts because I understand that those are not on the chopping block. So if that's correct?
That's correct.
Then I'm good. She's just cutting some of the purchases and she is satisfied with that budget, so thank you for that. I think that was good news. On the senior center, I'm assuming that the reduction of the director's position is still being considered, is that correct?
Yep.
It is approved, yeah.
It's approved.
Okay, that was approved in the draft budget. And I would ask that the council please reconsider that. I think if you reduce the director's salary from a .75 to a .625, my understanding is that would eliminate benefits as well and you're going to be recruiting a new director when this existing director retires in November. I think it would be very difficult to recruit someone that has the qualifications that are needed to run that senior center if they're essentially being asked to volunteer a great deal of their time, not have any benefits, and be paid for five hours a day.
I thought we approved the same hours for the...
No, they were reduced. The benefits would actually still be intact, actually.
For a minute.
That's still okay, but the hours would go down.
Yeah, six a day.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, instead of five and a half.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so they would still have benefits then? Okay, that's different from in the budget that I was reading. Again, though, I think reducing the hours really puts the center, the senior center at risk in terms of being managed by a qualified manager. They have a lot of really great volunteers, but it takes a manager to supervise those volunteers and keep programs running and to do training. And in talking with the current center manager, director, about 61% of the people using the senior center are from Monmouth, about 24% are from Independence where there is no senior center. So maybe another strategy for some of us who are supporting the center is to go to Independence and see if they wouldn't start kicking in a little bit for the budget for the senior center since their citizens are using it as well. That's something I would be happy to pursue. About 15% of the regular users are from Dallas and I've compared the Dallas calendar to the Monmouth calendar and they have a lot fewer activities. And from talking with people from Dallas who come to Monmouth, they do it because of the quality of the activities. The senior center also provides meal service and as you mentioned, it'll be a cooling station. It's much broader than just people sitting around playing cards. It's a meal spot, it's a safe place, it's a place for camaraderie and good health building experiences for people, so I hope you'll consider keeping the FTE at the existing rate. And I'm really happy to hear that they will have benefits. I'm assuming that the Police Department is getting funding for police officers, so that was the comment that came up last meeting. Is that the case?
The Police Department is getting funded for 14 sworn officers and the reorganization.
Okay, great. Well, good, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm president of the Monmouth Senior Community Center Advisory Board. Mayor Milligan and Monmouth City Councilors, I would like to address the same issue before the Budget Committee to reduce the paid hours for the director position. But before I do that, I'd like to take a few seconds to digress and tell you a little bit about the Monmouth Community Center. We have enjoyed a pretty gleaming reputation that draws people from at least six communities from around the area. We are well known to be family friendly and welcoming to all and offer a variety of services and programs that other senior centers do not. This is a reputation that is something that Monmouth can be proud of and what we offer is a bargain for the current level of funding. Now we move on. To reduce the hours for the services director and that the services that the director is able to provide in the time given to it would create a recruitment problem and provide a lack of a viable director's position and would be a large mistake for several reasons. And as you know, our current director, Sutile, will be retiring before the year is out and she will need a replacement. And I don't think that this body is aware of all that is involved in the director's duties and I will talk about a few areas of what she does. The director's position requires the management of a considerable number of volunteers and programs, that's the first thing that she does. Secondly, she requires the coordination, it requires the coordination and supervision of many student internship programs from the Gerontology Department of Western Oregon University as well as instructional classes from there. Thirdly, it requires that the director act as hostess, master of ceremonies, and coordinator of most of the functions of the senior community center. Lastly, the director is required to serve as a non-voting member on the advisory board, the Friends of Monmouth Senior Center, and numerous committees. These are only just the very few of the many duties that happen to keep the center running smoothly. In conclusion, all of these are vital to the quality of service to our senior population and with the recent new building expansion, our reach is poised to offer more to our community. These current levels of services require a time commitment that a cut in hours and funding would not even cover the current levels. Not only would it be difficult to find someone to complete this load in the hours given, but a cut in hours would erode the quality of services to our senior and intergenerational populations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone on non-agenda items?
Do you differentiate between the work agenda, the work session and the main?
Yeah, if it's about the parking, you want to talk about, yeah, we'll hear from you in the work session.
Work session.
Okay. Anyone else on non-agenda items?
Can I ask a question about the benefits? Said the new senior center director will have benefits. Is there a reduction, will they make exactly the same benefits?
Yeah, just once you're above a line, you should get the same.
So health insurance and personal time?
Everything, everything.
Okay.
So with that, we'll move on to the business agenda. And first item is to adopt a fee resolution for municipal court.
So, Mayor and council, I've been asked by our court clerk to bring forward the fee schedule updates for fees for the court. There's a couple things that have changed. They're now doing collections for payments that have not been received and they have rearranged the payment plan to reflect the amount of time and effort it takes to do payment plans for different amounts of funds. So that's the two major changes. Do you have any questions? Yes.
Yeah, I have one, two really. It says no insurance drivers improved based on driving record. I mean, there's no set price, that's the judge basically sets that or is...
Apparently, I mean, that's what, is that correct?
That's right, the judge would set that.
Yes.
So that, it could be anything at any time to anybody, basically. I mean, it's different, I mean, it's not the same for each person, is what I'm trying to...
That'd be correct, yeah. They would look at the number of convictions, prior convictions of the same offense.
And just logically.
This is just, again, deferred adjudication, so this is something who, a negotiated thing to begin with.
So there's no set low price, there's no set high price, it's just whatever he feels like?
Yeah, well, basically whatever's negotiated, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have kind of an issue with this. There's a very strong correlation between poverty and crime and it seems if we're raising the fees that are charged to people who have committed crimes, we might not be solving the problems in a manner we would like to solve them. It's max a little bit to me a debtor's prison. And also, I don't like the idea that municipality can't cover its own costs for taking care of these kinds of issues and if we begin to depend on them in the future, we're going to need people committing crime to bring that money in. So I'd like to just throw that out and say that there are different ways of looking at this.
Any other questions? This would be Resolution 1836.
Laurel brings up a good point. Are there, have we entertained alternatives to fees in this matter of community service or anything like that where they can work it off or something like that?
There is community service also.
Yeah, so a lot of cases, instead of getting a fine or something, you get community service.
You can negotiate that with the court or how that works?
Yeah, it's the judge's discretion on how they work with that and there's a lot of things that we do and that's one thing we talked about in the budget process is if we maintain our own court, we have more flexibility to work on those things.
As the county would just...
Mm-hmm, county would just pop, pop, it would just be, just taking care of them. So we've got a lot more flexibility with ours. What that's dealing with is just kind of simple, what the payment plans is, obviously the bigger, the longer, they're going to be paying it and so we're just trying to build that in a little bit better. We do at a net level lose money in our court, we don't cover court costs as it is. So if we make a decision to lower fees... So if we make a decision to lower fees in any way, then we're just having to subsidize that more with the jail fund, which then cuts into other parts of the jail fund.
But to Laurel's point, and I think it's a good one to consider, if you have an indigent defendant here, they're able to work off at least a portion of this in many occasions?
Yeah, depending on what the case is, yeah. That couldn't really give you examples.
Sure.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of the judge imposing any jail time for non-payment of fees or fines. It's dealt with through civil collection.
And then interestingly noted is that our court and any other court has just huge levels of unpaid debt. So a lot of people take the option, and that's how they manage it. They just don't pay it.
If it's a traffic-related issue, does the defendant ever have their driver's license taken away?
Could.
Okay, so here you have a situation of someone who now owes more in fees and can't get to work because they don't have a driver's license. I'd like to think about it in those terms as well.
Well, I guess I would ask, and Lynn, you might be able to comment on this, but the likelihood of suspending someone's driver's license for minimal non-payment is unlikely.
It's the unusual case. And even with a suspended license, a person is eligible for a work exemption to a suspension.
So there would be a way around it.
Yeah.
I share the concern.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out the order of magnitude.
I'm not aware of any issues on any scale. I think you hear about it in the news. I'm not aware of any issues on any scale in the Monmouth Municipal Court.
Well, isn't... You can't apply for a work permit for ninety days, though, if it's a duty.
Well, that's right. But that's unrelated to the fine. That's a consequence of the conviction.
But he also hears duties here.
Yeah, oh, yeah, he does, yeah.
Any further questions? Or have a motion?
Do you have a resolution?
Eighteen thirty-six.
Move to adopt Resolution eighteen thirty-six, a resolution adopting miscellaneous municipal court fees and repealing conflicting provisions.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Phil's roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Schinkel?
No.
Counselors Dunkey?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
Three to three.
Three to three, so that's up to me. So I vote yes that we pass this resolution. So that passes four to three. And moving on to the next business item, we have the update of the Monmouth Power and Light Administrative Rules and Regulations.
Yep, thank you. We're going to go through the... In the city code, you have your basic level of kind of managing utilities, but then we've got a more detailed document that gets into more in-depth on how we actually operate. The fun part of this one is we found something that was actually older than our personnel rules. And so it was actually built back in 1979. They've just done little patch, you know, kind of interpretations here and there over time. And so at this point, they had an issue come up. They said, "Let's do some cleanup while we're in there, too." So the main things you've got that are strung to the document is the rules and regulations adopt fees that are actually dealt with separately. The council sets fees on a different basis, so they don't need to be referenced here. We had a lot of references to the city recorder being involved with billing at various levels. The history on that was way back when. The city recorder treasurer was a combined position, and so they went that direction to get those taken care of, and also took care of the finance. So that was a linear thing. So now it goes back to a normal process where we go through the finance director and the city manager. And then really, the significant one's number two noted there is where a billing system works is you have like a tenant in. If the tenant goes and there's a gap, then it goes back to the landlord. So landlord has that. So they would have it until the next tenant comes back in, so you get a little bit of a kind of a ping-pong effect. And one thing that has happened is that sometimes if the tenant moves out, landlord takes over the bill, and then the next tenant comes, we've got an unpaid bill. The landlord hasn't paid, and sometimes is conscious, they're just not willing. And so what we've done to make sure that one gets paid is we've said, "Hey, we can't move in your next tenant until you get that cleared out." And so we've been doing that for years. When we got asked a question recently, we found out that actually it's in our rules. We've been doing it for probably decades, but never has actually adopted in there. So that change would actually make it very clear that it is a responsibility of the landlord to get that cleared out. And if you did not approve that, what will happen is if a landlord's going to hold the property for a long time, they just really don't need to pay the bill, you know, because as long as the tenants can just keep popping through and they make money off that business income, they wouldn't need to really do anything. So what that would do is actually get that one cleaned up. And those are really the main things. Like you said, the first couple ones are strung through, the references to fees, reference to the city recorder. And then that key thing is actually in Section Six that talks about the rental properties. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
This is when we had all the people in here that we discovered that they hadn't paid for ten years when we sent the bills out, and this is part of that cleanup, in that we had that big...
Yeah, and we had that, and that was obviously our awesome old software that took care of that, and the new software had a different opinion. But in this case, it was something that practice had always been there, but we just didn't have a documented problem.
How frequently does that occur on Section J, the addition on Section J or Six of J? How frequently does that occur?
You know, here and there. I mean, mostly in our town, we've got a pretty good turnover, so they'll kind of go in and out pretty well. The ones that we get more concerned about is if you have somebody, they do like to renovations on a building, so then you could actually have it for weeks. And then sometimes you throw in power tools and other things that are running the heat, whatever it may be to kind of work on. So you can actually get some pretty substantial bills. If it's just a, you know, it's this time of year, and you got a gap in tenant of a couple of weeks, you know, it won't be more than a few dollars. But it's really those gaps, especially when somebody's working in there, you can add up.
And based on the number of times, at least from the phone calls I would get from Mark Dunbar, I'd say it's infrequent.
Yeah, my only concern as I was reading through these changes is that the tenant is going to get stuck between the city and the landlord, and the tenant's going to be the one to suffer at that point.
Yeah, and what happens...
Is there a way to... And I understand the purpose of this, and it's right on point in trying to solve the issue of making sure landlords are accountable for the services that they use. It's just... I don't know, has there been thought given to a way around that? Some sort of discretion by the city to not... If a situation is where a tenant gets stuck in between the city and the landlord? Because lots of times, and I've been, not in this exact situation, but I've been in the situation where I was a new renter, and I had begun moving my things in, and the previous renter or the previous owner, I don't remember who it was, hadn't paid a bill, and they wanted to turn my utilities on. And like, okay, well, I kind of need those things. And luckily, I was able to press the issue and get that taken care of. So is there still going to be that little room and discretion by you or whoever it is to... If that situation arises where the tenant's not the one left holding the bag there?
The way it works is the tenant is involved, and where it's very effective is the tenant calls up the landlord and says, "What's going on? I want this taken care of," and it's essentially taken care of the same day.
And keep in mind, during landlord and tenant law, requires the landlord to provide electrical service. So this really is in sync with that. The landlord has to provide the electrical service, and if the condition of that is they have to pay the lingering bill, they have to pay the lingering bill. But they're required in the law to provide electrical service to the tenant.
And if they can't, for whatever reason, a landlord's behind, they can't pay that thing, who's left holding that?
Well, the tenant wouldn't be able to have electrical service.
And the tenant would have a claim against the landlord.
Yeah. The tenant doesn't want claims. The tenant doesn't want to litigate. The tenant just wants someplace in there where they can watch cable.
Yeah, the main thing is it's very good leverage. It's very effective. That's where we set up our whole system, is hold the landlord accountable for the tenant's bills, and that we're actually having him accountable for their own bills. If we took that away, yes, I'm sure some of those tenants in that situation would love it, and then we would just start stacking up unpaid bills. Because there's no incentive to pay. Once the tenants can come in and out freely, there's no incentive to pay the bill.
Well, and that's my question. Is there a different mechanism that you can use citing that?
We can go to collections and work that whole process, but it's very ineffective. Our system right now, the bill is paid. It's taken care of. If we go to those other ones, you can start having the drift of only a certain percentage of the bills will get paid.
One of Byron's concerns, I think, gets addressed by the policy, and forgive me if I've been number wrong, tenants, unlike homeowners, have to pay a $200 deposit.
Yeah.
And so if the bill is, because the tenant didn't pay his last month's electric and skipped out, the city's holding $200 of his dollars to pay that, and it's going to pay a typical bill at least. And so I think the only situations where this comes up probably is where the property's vacant for a while and the power is left on. Does that bring...
Yeah, and there's a couple things about that. You're talking a little more about the tenant. We got a deposit for them, but this is a little different angle or situation, maybe. But it's mostly, it's the bigger ones that we'd be more concerned about. But what actually ended up, we were kind of roaming the comment about what we had before, is what those were is sometimes just dozens and dozens and dozens of gaps because the landlord kind of said, you know, some days left him.
But this is... But if a tenant were to leave with a large uncovered debt, that still has to be paid also.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. So we clear that out, and then we deal with whatever we need to do with that tenant. Interestingly, I was talking to someone, I think it was actually City of Salem. Salem actually holds the prior tenant's bill on the new tenant. And so actually, granted, so they actually had to pay out the former bill to get their service. You know, that's even worse, because now you've got totally something detached. If you're the landlord, that's your business. You know, so you have a responsibility to run your business. But that seemed really harsh when I heard that. It was like, wow.
Can you explain a little bit about how you see the reconnection charges being assessed by a resolution of the city council? What does that mean?
Okay, what do you have, Laurel?
Well, there's several places here on page nine.
The cost of those charges is set by resolution.
By resolution rather than a set cost.
Rather than in the rules. Because these rules don't get amended. Regularly, the resolutions do come up periodically every couple of years, and that's when these fees and charges are addressed by you.
Uh-huh, okay. So we might, in the future, have a majority city council that has never been an elderly widow or a single mom who has to choose between paying the rent and paying the electric bill. And these fees, then, for reconnection may be, again, unaffordable for a poor person.
Yep, that can be challenging, sure.
But isn't there a program with the state that you can file? Because we get the letter that you can file. If you can't pay your bill, you can go to the state, and they'll help you out with the electrical bills.
Is there an ombudsman or anyone of that sort here in Monmouth? Someone who works for a church, maybe, a volunteer who can help people?
This is actually a very effective program. Yeah, we just give them the phone number. We actually, we have an entity that manages it for us. We send the money to them. There's a pool available, and then they're very quick, very effective to work with.
And at local level, you have the Resource Center, Polk County Resource Center in Dallas that also provides emergency money for electrical service.
Would the typical tenant know about this?
Oh, our staff takes care of it. Our staff helps them.
And you sign up?
Yeah, somebody comes in and says, "Hey, I got some trouble here. I'm going to have..." And they say, "Well, here, let me get you the number." We just get them right to where they need to be.
It came to a head about five years ago, and that really got panned out, and it was via the county, the state. And it's, they paid probably ninety-eight percent of those bills, I think, if I count them.
Yeah, that's really helpful.
Help, the helping part.
Okay.
So this has got to be Resolution eighteen thirty-five. I misread my resolution number sheet, so we're going to go back a number to make sure we don't have a gap in numbers. So this would be Resolution eighteen thirty-five.
I move to adopt Resolution eighteen thirty-five, a resolution amending the Monmouth Power and Light Administrative Rules and Regulations.
Second.
Then go to the second. Any further questions? Roll call, please, Phil's.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
Counselor Schinkel?
Aye.
Counselors Dunkey?
Aye.
And that motion passes five to one. And moving on to the next item, we're going to have a first reading of Legislative Amendment seventeen dash zero one, amendments to the Sign Code, subdivision ordinance, and zoning ordinance.
Honorable mayor members of the council, this is the ordinance adopting Legislative Amendment seventeen dash oh one, amendments to the Monmouth City Code, Chapter fifteen ten, the Sign Code, Chapter seventeen, the subdivision and partition ordinance, and Chapter eighteen, the zoning ordinance. The council voted at the conclusion of its public hearing on May the second to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adopt the supposed amendments. So this would be the first reading, and then if you proceed forward, the second reading will be scheduled for your next meeting on June the twentieth. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, did anybody, any of the businesses say anything? We sent letters out. Did any of them respond?
No, nobody responded, no. I walked around with a letter and my card and hand-delivered them and gave them the hearing notice, and they knew the meetings were... Okay, thank you.
And to be clear, this that's here reflects the discussions we had. Did you say May second?
Yeah. This is just in...
Yeah, so...
This is the ordinance version of what you approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing different from what you approved.
Any further questions? So ordinance adopting Legislative Amendment seventeen dash zero one to the Monmouth zoning and development ordinance relating to signs, subdivisions, and partitions, property line adjustments, and site plan review. And I declare it passes first reading. And that moves us to council comments. Hearing none. Tonight, we're going to be having an executive session. How we're going to handle this is I'll read the statement for the executive session. We'll recess the regular session and move into the work session. From the work session, we'll adjourn and move back into the regular session to pick up the executive session. So at this point, June sixth, two thousand and seventeen, the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing ORS one ninety-two dot zero zero, or six six zero two E, real property transactions. The executive session is held or soon to ORS one ninety-two six six zero two E, real property transactions, which allows the council to meet in the executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No decision will be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. It is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. So do I have a motion to recess this meeting to move to work session?
And move that we recess, move to work session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Right.